Welcome to the Madawan Aberdeen School District Committee of the Hall Meeting, January 10th, 2022. Tonight is now 6:30 PM. Can we please stand for the pledge allegiance? The New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure that the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Madawan Aberdeen Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on January 8th, 2021 in the Asbury Park Press and the Starlet Journal. This notice was sent to the municipal clerks of the Bureau of Madawan and the Towne Chapel of Aberdeen and the Madawan Aberdeen Public Library. The notice was also placed on the district's website. Ms. Case, can you give a roll call? Mr. Anger?
Here.
Dr. Galaney?
Here.
Ms. Phylis?
Here.
Ms. Friedman?
Here.
Ms. Martina?
Here.
Mr. Montal?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Present.
Mrs. Scoly?
Here.
Okay. Correspondence to the board. Can I get a motion and a second to accept the correspondence?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Yep, okay. Okay, with that, we're going to jump to the board president's report. Welcome. I'd like to start the president's report by thanking the students administration, staff, and entire school community. It's been almost two years now that we've been dealing with COVID-19, and I think most of us thought we then were hoping that it would be a distant memory by now. As we have stated in the past, our priority is keeping students safely learning in the classroom full-time, and we appreciate everyone's help in the school community to make this happen. While we did see our biggest spike in total number of cases last week, that was to be expected with people gathering over the holidays. We are hopeful and anticipate that numbers will come back down in the next week or so. We will continue to ensure that we have appropriate safety measures in place to help mitigate any school-based spread. We ask that we all continue to work together to keep this going. I believe that the Madawan Aberdeen Regional is a great school district and one that I am very happy that my children are able to attend. We're proud of all the things this district has achieved and how far we have come. Our rankings tell a positive story. Of the best school districts in New Jersey, seven years ago, we were ranked in the mid-250s. Currently, we are ranked number 83, and we are also ranked number six in the best school districts in Monmouth County. Over the past couple of years, we have added new academic programs as well as new extracurricular activities for our students. We have listened to community members, staff, and students. If they thought there was a need for a new program, we've given due diligence to looking into it, and a lot of times proceeded forward with it. We've added extra support to help students academically as well as support for those students who may be struggling from a social, emotional standpoint. We have improved our technology and ensured that every student has access to a computer. We continue to increase communication within the school community, and will continue to push forward and look for additional opportunities to improve for our children so they can excel. Strategic planning is a great opportunity for our school community members playing an active role. We look forward to continuing to work together and doing what's best for our students and always keeping them at the forefront of the decisions we make. Over the past week, there have been a number of questions around the latest DOH guidance and how the district plans to handle it. Specifically, people have voiced concern on whether we will only allow vaccinated students to participate in extracurricular activities, and if we will be testing the students and staff multiple times a week to participate. As we have stated before, those are guidelines we are given, not mandates. For our local district, we have never said we are going to follow those guidelines and have no intention of doing so. We will continue to thoroughly review guidelines as they are updated and make the decisions that we feel are in the best interest of our children. We are also looking into options if a parent needs help having their child tested, we know how difficult it is right now, as well as the test-to-stay option. But again, those would both be optional, not required. Another topic we've had questions around is the comprehensive health and physical education policy. At our meeting in December, this policy was read in its first read and is up for a second read tonight. As mentioned at our last meeting, we posted the policy for the public on the district website. Following the policy, the staff will be developing curriculum guides, which will go into greater detail on what will be taught at the various grade levels. We will then review those guides to ensure that what will be taught is age-appropriate and tailored to meet our district's standards. Staff will be provided professional development to ensure that what is taught is appropriate for each age level. We will also be mindful as to what has happened elsewhere and make sure that what we do is what we believe is right for our district. As stated previously, there will be an opt-out option if the parents or guardians should choose to do so. We will need to communicate what the curriculum is and when it will take place so that parents can speak to their child prior and/or following the education at school, or opt out if they choose to do so. In terms of the start strong testing that the students took in the fall, we plan to present the district results at the board meeting, the first board meeting in February. Also, for any community members that sent a board correspondence, if it was received after the agenda was published, it will be added to the next meeting's agenda. And lastly, kindergarten as well as now the preschool registration for the 2022-2023 school year information is available on the district website. With that, we will move to Student Services. Ms. Perez?
Good evening. Under Student Services, two action items. We're asking for approval under item number one and item number two. Thank you.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All second.
Okay. Personnel, Mr. Lehman?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. We're asking the board to take action on appointments tonight. We're asking to take action on the three names that are listed with positions, salaries, and effective dates as listed, and those items for action. Remaining items, we are asking the board for discussion and approval at the RAM for items A, B, C numbers one through 10, and item D number one and two. That includes personnel.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All second.
All second. Policy, Mr. Lehman?
We are asking the board to approve the second reading and adoption of policies and regulations as listed on page 1 of 1. That concludes policy.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the second read of the policies?
Some move.
Second. Finance, Ms. Case?
We'll be looking to take action on following items on the RAM, 1 through 8. Please note that we will make the adjustment to January 22nd for number 5, and the long-range facilities plan for number 7. And that concludes finance.
Okay. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
All move.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board on any agenda items?
Mrs. Scoly, I have a comment on the policy agenda. In regards to the health policy, this has been something that the board has had in our hands since October. I know that a number of people have commented on it, and it truly is my hope, given the year that we've had, some of the responses that we have, that the intent of this type of policy is to ensure that there is more understanding and more empathy between the children, the students, maybe the parents and faculty as well, between different cultures, different ideologies, differences in abilities, and identifications, sexuality, to be more understanding of what other people are going through. Because as a public school and a member of this community, we have to remember that we are part of a greater individual than just our school district, just our school room. I brought back to the time when I went to the MAM's equity team discussion where the community members had brought up that bullying and bias and just male treatment tends to be brought on by fear and a lack of understanding. And I think this policy is really the beginning. I urge and have absolute faith, as you noted in your president's report, as a district, we have made leaps and bounds in improvements in offering such a variety of coursework and activities that the curriculum team that has been set up, as we have done for every other venture of this sort, will be very attentive to age-appropriate learning, to having those goals that we set in that policy in mind. And I just wanted to thank everybody for working on it and recognizing that I do think it's an important step in us becoming a stronger, cohesive, and understanding community.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Powell?
As somebody new to the board, I wanted to note, you know, because I was on the other side of the discussion for some of the talk about the new policy. I appreciate what Ms. Friedman's saying about the students and how they are accepted, and that school is for everyone. And also wanted to note that these policies, for the most part, are mandated by the state, and that I appreciated that the board developed the policy, has clear direction for how to opt out, and also that it makes the curriculum available for review by parents or other interested people in the public at each school. I really appreciated that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any agenda item? No? Okay. With that, we're going to move into public comments relating to agenda items and additional matters. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on matters of interest to the school community. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements should be directed to the board president, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect to the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to cycle comment on matters of legitimate concern, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of the legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. With that, I just want to remind everyone, because we do have a larger audience tonight, if we can limit our comments to three minutes to allow everyone a chance. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Santora, Lloyd Road. I have a quick question about something on the agenda. It says here, "The other bullying incidents reported, 16, five confirmed." Just a quick question. Is that 16 total since December 20th? Or that's 16 in the month?
Mr. Lehman?
That's 16 from the previous board meeting.
16 new ones from the one I saw last time?
Yes.
Yep.
How do you confirm incidents?
Mr. Lehman?
So, there's a process that when a case comes to a building, the principal reviews it, assigns it to an anti-bullying specialist, a person investigates, and if there's findings that meet the criteria of him, it goes back to the principal. For action, the principal reviews it, sends it to the superintendent, and then sends it to the board.
Would the board consider letting us know where these incidents occurred, or is that some violation?
Yes, twice a year, by law, under the H.I.B. statute, the superintendent's required to report to the board. I don't think I've been present for one of these semi-annual reports that are made, but by law, they are required to break down where the, which schools the findings were made at. Of course, for obvious reasons, they don't go into more detail than that, but that is reported out twice annually, or should be.
All right. I just, that was just about this. I'll just do it real quick. I have a couple of quick questions. I'll go fast. So, I would like to thank you for the new health sex ed policy. As I said, Lloyd Road was wonderful this year with being able to provide the curriculum, including a PowerPoint, which was amazing. Made me feel much better as a parent. So, as long as I continue to be accommodated and I'm able to see the curriculum, then I really don't see having a problem. So, I would like the board, I would like to thank the board for making that such a transparent process and making our lives easier, because I like the fact that we can opt out if there's anything that we are uncomfortable with, or we can discuss it with our children ahead of time, see how comfortable they are, because everyone is at different levels, and then find out if they should continue or not. So, thank you very much for that. I would like to also thank you for not accepting the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health, because that's bananas. It's hard on my concern. I'm happy you guys kind of agree with me. I don't know how much you guys were watching, but I actually stayed home today, so I could watch what's going on in Capitol. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but Sweeney pulled the bill that extends the emergency powers. You guys don't have to answer this now, but be aware that this is something that's coming, and we're going to be asking you guys to make masks optional, unless Murphy declares another emergency power thing. So, I just wanted to, you know, I know you guys go to executive sessions, so I would love for you guys to talk about it during the executive session. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Fur. I live in Subpointe in Madawan. And something really interesting occurred over the break when I got him, or over the last couple of days, when I got my daughter's SmartSource, or whatever it was called, for it. I realized that my daughter has not advanced at all since quarantine started. And then I started looking at my other kids' grades, and I realized that my eighth grader, who was a strong B, almost A student in the first marking periods of 2019 and 2020 before COVID started, he had all As and Bs, merit follows. I was so excited. I got my magnet. And then I looked at his third marking period grade, the first time he hauled it. Failed. Fourth marking period, literally failed every single class. And then I looked again at this first marking period, failed. Second marking period, failed. And I'm wondering to myself, what is the difference? And I realized the difference is, is that we stopped teaching in the classroom to the kids, and we are relying on computers. My kids never used computers before. Now, everything is on the computer. And while I know this is something that we need to do, we have to advance ourselves technologically, it doesn't work for everybody. Tomorrow, he'll finally be going back to school after, I think he's been out since December 8th, with two, what I call, "coronizations," because he went to the nursing office, which I told him now, because he's bleeding outside the side of his head. He is, like, not allowed in the nursing office. And then my daughter tested positive, so he was out again. My question to the board is, why is it that when we went back to school, did we not put the Chromebooks to the side and start teaching the way that we were teaching before, with pens and papers, and making things, like, not on the computer all the time? And then, when you guys make it on the computer and the kids aren't succeeding, at least in my experience, it's been, "Well, you're his parent. You're home with him. Make sure he's online." "No, no, sorry. I don't work for the district. I don't get a membership to the NJDA. I am not a teacher." We learn that much here, obviously. But I'm curious as to why is it that we did not go back to what was happening before? Why did we continue? I mean, again, we spent a lot of money on the computers. That's great. But why are we going back? At least not, at least for some of the students it's not working for. And the fact of the matter is, is that, like I think the state said, what is it, 50% of the state tested that they need strong support? I'm so curious, because my fourth grader is still at a second grade level, still at a second grade level. And now I have to go chase after the child study team to request an intervention at a meeting when the teachers are agreeing with me, and I have an email from one of her teachers that said, "Well, if you request a child study team meeting, it'll be much faster. But if I say something, I'm gonna have to do an INRS first." Why? My child is clearly dyslexic. She's in the classroom with a teacher who teaches that type of child. The school won't even test for that. Okay? That I already know. The school won't test. I have a timer. I'm watching. I feel worried. I've got it for teachers. And I'm just curious as to, like, well, everyone's crying about mandates and masks, like, our kids are failing, and it's, how does that even happen? How are we allowing that to happen? That's my question.
Thank you. We can't discuss your personal child here in this meeting?
Personal. I would like to know why. Okay, I'll rephrase my question. My child is failing because she is, and my children are failing because they don't work well online. That I know. Why is it that when we went back after doing virtual, did we not put the Chromebooks back in the box and start teaching the kids the way they used to, with pen and paper and stuff like that?
We are. I'm gonna have to look into your specific issue, but we have, we have been balancing that out in classes. And to your point, about 50% in New Jersey, you're absolutely right. And we are diligently doing, we had programs offered all summer, and we have programs offered after school. We've had to, we've had to contract some of them because nobody's showing up for them as well. So, I'm gonna have to look into your comment about the computers, and I will call you back by Wednesday to find out specifically what the percentages are in the classroom that your children are in when they're using the computers as opposed to the paper and pencil that you had mentioned.
I appreciate that. When you look for assignments for teachers, they're always like, "What are the parent portal?" Figure out.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I say, "I appreciate it," because then every time I ask the teachers, they're all like, "What are the parent portals? Look in the parent portal. If it's in the parent portal, it doesn't match up with some Google classroom." And I'm like, "What? No, I can't."
All right. And then I will call you by Wednesday.
Before we move to the next comment, anybody in the audience that isn't masked, if you could please put a mask on? It's the executive order that we have to follow. Thank you. Ma'am, could you put a mask on, please? We have them. We should.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Mark, I section. I just, again, want to come back off of Cindy and say thank you for not making this mandate, because I'm starting to kick out from homeschool now. If you're going to mandate the vaccination, my oldest is in sixth grade. He plans on doing intramural basketball, trying out for baseball. He just did soccer.
Just know, intramurals is separate from us.
But it's at middle school.
Well, yes, but, oh, intramurals in the school. I thought you were coming out right. I'm sorry. My bad. My bad. Because I had a few questions this past week, if you were in charge of rec as well. That's something completely, so, no worries.
Yeah, I know. And I was gonna be really bummed for him, and then I was gonna have to call him out, and he's doing really, really well. I also wanted to thank you about not just running into something like the new health and sex curriculum, or health and physical ed curriculum. I'm very eager to see what the curriculum would be. So, when do you expect to have those, so we can make decisions?
So, the curriculum guides would be updated typically over the summer, and typically the curriculum guides are all approved in the summer in the month of August.
Okay, so we'd be able to see it before they start in school?
The board approves the curriculum first, and then once the board adopts the curricula, gives me a couple.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, okay, I forgot. What I meant to do back off Cindy is about, please have the discussion in your executive order to make masks optional. I mean, the CDC, who's old and, like, hailing a dog up until these past few weeks, has always said that they were. Now they're saying they don't. They don't. They're a clock. And I'd like for my first grader, who already has speech issues, to be able to see his teacher's face and talk to his classmates and have what my older son had. And also my two-year-old, I can't send her a date. There would be nothing, basically, that's not, I mean, you have the control of that, but it'd be great to be able to let it optional. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else before a second? Second?
Amy, Amy Waddle to Chesnut. I do want to thank each and every one of you for listening. I sent a bunch of emails, and I feel like you are listening to the parents, especially when it comes to, not everybody is the same, even though with the state ed, you have to hold for witnesses that their kids aren't even allowed to watch Disney movies. So, it really needs to be up to the individual family and the parents and to make these decisions. And I appreciate you listening to the parents. Like, I do have a child who had sixty vaccines, and she was injured then. And I cannot medically get her this at this time. So, I, you know, I don't want her to be discriminated against, and I appreciate you listening. So, thank you. I appreciate that. And there are some things, like, I'm kind of concerned, like the sex ed stuff and everything, but I feel like at least our board is listening to parents. So, thank you.
Anyone else? The first question?
So, my question is, I'm Subpointe, Madawan. So, last time there was a meeting, when we had our new people come in and were, you know, sworn in, we spent a lot of time on God's face. I was watching my mind. I was still quarantined. My daughter was still sick. My question is this. I'm looking over everyone who's on the board, and I noticed that there's someone who's on the board who is married to someone who's on the city council. And I'm curious as to how we're going to ethically view that, because sometimes what the city council wants is not necessarily what the board.
That is not for discussion here. That's, that's not.
That's not. We have a question, the ethics of allowing someone to intervene over that.
That's we can.
Sorry, I missed your question. Because of the education laws, there are specific proconditions on, for example, there's a specific law on the books that says you cannot be a board member and also yourself be a member of the governing body. There's nothing in the law that prohibits you from having a relative or a spouse who's a member of the governing body. But just like board members are not allowed to share confidential information with their spouses generally, but that would apply to a spouse who also happens to be on the city councilor. So, all I can tell you in answer to your question is, the law does not prohibit it. Board members are prohibited from sharing confidential information with any outsiders anyway, whether they're related to them or not. We have no reason to believe that restriction will be violated in this particular case. All board members are aware of their ethical obligations from their training as a new board member and as recently as their update on the School Ethics Act, the last meeting that I presented.
Because something is happening. We all don't make it right.
I think I have to mention this. So, I'm a working parent. Pay our amazing taxes to both of us outdoors. And I usually catch the 5:50 box out of Port Authority, and I usually get here about 6:45, which is 15 minutes late for these meetings. It is very difficult for working parents. Pretty big in social media, and I get a lot of messages that 6:30 start time is very difficult for working parents. So, I'm gonna tell you guys that I would like to recommend you guys move to the 7 o'clock start time, because for people who work in the city like myself, it is very difficult for me to get here. I have to, like, I mean, like, I run my department, so I can leave early, but I don't like leaving early. I tend to take advantage. So, anytime there's a board meeting, I have to leave work about 40 minutes early to be able to make your meetings on time. So, I just wanted to mention that. I think you guys really need to consider working parents or their parents whose children do dance or basketball, and 6:30 start time just doesn't work for them. Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to ask before. Stephanie, Angela, so, like, I wanted to say what Cindy was saying. Sometimes it's really hard to have a babysitter, or if my husband's not home from work, come here. And since you're still able to see it virtually, but you're not allowed to participate, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I read something online that says that you have to. It's called the Sunshine Law. It says that you will have to, the board must provide a period of public comment at every meeting. And it's a recently enacted PL 2020. 11 specifically says that a public body is authorized to receive public comment. is authorized to receive public comments by means of communication or electronic equipment. Because I know, like what Cindy said, there's a lot of people that feel all the same ways about everybody that came up and spoke tonight, that they're just, "Oh, we need to get back here." And it was wonderful being able to be home with my kids or people are working unless it's for meetings, and if they have a question, they'd be able to do it and have the technology. And I know for in-person, and that's the whole point, but this is a little different than fighting for in-person school and having the parents who have, who are juggling so many things, like, you understand, to be able to be a part of their child education. So, I'm really, I don't know, Mr. Rubin, if you're aware of the Sunshine Law?
I, I'm well aware of it.
Okay. So, can I explain it friendly?
No. If your explanation is that the board is required to do that, the answer is no.
Well, that's what it says in the document that I reviewed.
The part you read doesn't say that it says the board may. It doesn't say that the board's required to do.
It said the board must provide a period of.
Oh, that part, yes, and that's exactly what we're doing right now.
Okay, and it said by means of communication or electronic equipment.
I'm familiar with the Open Public Meetings Act, which some folks call the Sunshine Law for short. It does not require, if we were having a remote meeting, the emergency regulation that allows for remote meetings would require, wouldn't you say that? An in-person meeting, there's no obligation to allow for that. The board may, but they're not required to.
And you would believe that saying it changed on March 3rd?
That's not my understanding of the law and even what you just read. I mean, you asked me the question. That's the answer.
Okay, so is there a reason why we do not allow it to just be forever? Because obviously, when we were virtual, those meetings were, it makes me long.
As soon as we went all in-person, that's when we initially even shut down the virtual component, and then we thought we should still have the communication out there so that people could see it live stream. But honestly, if people have comments that they'd like to say, rather than hiding, you know, we'd rather them come and say them. Just like you would, kids are going to school. That's what we're all, so many people are.
But, like, I'm trying to explain, having your kids in school versus virtual is not the same thing as getting someone to come to somewhere at 6:30 at night on Monday when they work overnight or they work nights. They don't have a babysitter. That kind of stuff. It's a little different. You can't really compare to the same situation. Just like if you had quarantine and paid for your kid, you could still remote log in and participate in this meeting through Google, right? So, that should be the same. If we already have the technology, why come here? So, that's what I'm trying to understand. Because it's very difficult to get here at this time and to every meeting, just so we can be made aware of what's going on. So, if you can consider that, that would be great. And I think if we have a lot more people and voices in our community showing up, like we did when we were all virtual. Okay. Thank you.
Jamie Melner, Agri Dean. I walked in a little late. Was it correct we're not mandating testing slash vaccines for the sports, right? And I'm going to hope that going further, that would just be general for school. And I'm going to be surprised, obviously, if you can control along with, like, if a person can tell you guys when you have to do it, you won't be there, not correct? We can cover.
So, what we had said early on is that we're going to look at each guideline that comes out and based on our district, and what we think meets our students' needs and our staff's needs, like, the school community's needs. We will look at each one individually, and Dr. Micah will make the decisions.
So, that's still not a firm that we're.
Oh, no, we said no.
As you stated, it hasn't been mandated.
Yeah.
Right. So.
So, as long as it's not, we're not going to. And I would hope that, I mean, yeah, basically not. Because, you know, like, half these problems that we're talking about go away with parents' care, like, you know, masks, vaccine, all these things that we're, like, pressuring you guys to do and you have the power to, obviously, like I said, without this guy telling you what you have to do. Just went back to everything to be a parent's choice. You do realize how much the last handful of you, right? Like, whether that is, like, we were saying, like, oh, my kid contracts COVID because we didn't have a mask on. We don't hold the school liable for it or any such thing like that, because it is a public school, you know?
I mean, I think that's also why we wrote a letter early on that asking for the local district power. But what we said to them was that we need to look at what's going on in our district and see what's happening and what meets our needs at the time. So, yes.
So, just to be clear, you're saying, like, if happens our area is going, at that time, you have to make that decision. We have, like, numbers, like, we have today. You guys are going to start saying that we need to have these come back? We need to.
No, we didn't say that.
So, the next thing is quarantine time. So, we doing five days now? Do you think the pandemic knows symptoms?
Yes, and new guidelines came out at about 3 o'clock this afternoon, which, when I'm done with this meeting, I'm going to sit down and progress to get everything ready to whatever that guidance is, which I can't speak to it right now because I haven't read the whole thing. I didn't have time to look at it yet. But as soon as this, I was going to say movie. As soon as, sometimes the last 22 minutes seem like a movie, but it will be reviewed and incorporated into what we're currently doing. So.
Boarding number 168, Lloyd Road. Another question for the school itself. Did we have any, did we make any leeway on getting a woodshop teacher? Or have we still had?
Unfortunately, no. We haven't gotten anyone to apply. And as we've stated before, getting people to apply is becoming more and more difficult, especially, you know, in that, those highly specialized areas. Woodshop being one of them, but we're working diligently. Mr. Leavitt makes me call us to agencies every day. We're, it's an ongoing process that we are working night and day on. For, not only that, although we have many others that we need to fill that we're doing the same thing.
I just want to touch, because I came a little late also.
Absolutely.
I'm grateful that everybody is, you know, working together to stop this craziness, and I hope you continue to keep fighting for the rights of our kids because they are being disturbed mentally by all this crazy behavior. So, please keep fighting for them. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm not regularly. I'm actually not in the district, but actually, I'm moving to the congressional district on the Republican candidate for Congress. So, I've been asked to come to this meeting as well as over the past year, several board event meetings, just to speak on behalf of the parents for medical freedom and trying to allow as much flexibility who wants their kids to wear masks, who doesn't, that kind of thing. Then it should be a family decision, parental decision, as well as potentially the doctor's, the family doctor's decision if there's a special need there. So, I just wanted to, something, like I said, I was invited to say a few words. I'll keep it a few. But I appreciate the pressures and the strictures that you guys have been under for the last couple of years unlike anything I've ever seen. And so, thank you for that. I appreciate what we do and what we continue to do, and I hope we will give a thought on any rules that come out, wherever there is flexibility. Please try to consider leaving the masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we're going to move to any unfinished business? Okay, any new business? Ms. Friedman?
I was speaking with somebody from New Jersey Sustainability about a food project share that I wanted to send to you and Dr. Micah, see if maybe Chant Wells would be interested. They're looking for pilot schools. So, that extra food would be donated to pantry. I know Madawan has been giving, had dinners once or twice a week. I think that just ended. Unfortunately, I don't think the meat has just ended. So, I thought that might be a really good project to get in on. So, if that's okay, I would forward that to you.
Anyone else? Okay. Be resolved, oops, sorry, no, but on agenda items. Student services personnel and secondary legal policies. Roll call. Ms. Rayner?
Yes.
Dr. Delane?
Yes.
Ms. Pylus?
Yes.
Ms. Friedman?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Montone?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mrs. Gollum?
Yes.
Be resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and legal matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. Although the board cannot guarantee it, the length of the executive session is estimated to be 30 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will not take place. Motion and a second to enter exec?
All moved.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.